Good morning, everyone. It's April 3rd and this is a regular Board of County Commissioners meeting for Franklin County.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Harris?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
If you would stand and join me for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which this stands, my justice and my life and their mission with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think we have somebody for an invocation today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate the opportunity to come and open this session in a word of prayer, but I just want to share a couple of scriptures, ones that are very familiar. For God so loves the world that he gives his only son that whoever believes in him will not perish but have eternal life. God did not send his son into the world to condemn and not to save it, and that is evident in the celebration that we had this past Easter Sunday. Father, we come this morning now in an order of business for this commission. We would just ask that you would bring the fullness of your presence into this meeting, that you would anoint the leadership that is here, that you would give them discernment and direction in the decisions that need to be made for this county. And we just want to support them for the work that they do, sometimes the sacrifice in time and family. So just lead this meeting in the way it should go. I would ask that you would be with all our county employees, all those that have worked for the county, from the office to the streets. Keep your hand upon them, protect your families, and protect them in the job that they do. And may each of us be efficient on what you called each and every one of us to do. And may we, as citizens of this county, support this leadership, support those that are working for us, and just come alongside them in the work and in the job that they do. Again, Lord, your presence in this meeting, in your name we pray. Amen.
All right, under correspondent organizational business, first we have a update and apparently a request from Franklin County Honors. Derek Clarkum's here.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Derek Clarkum. I'm with Franklin County Honors. We're the organization that is responsible for the Veterans Day Parade and the displays around the city. First, I really want to say thank you for the support that you've given us over the years. Without your support, none of that would be possible. Second, we are looking to expand what we do. We want to branch out beyond just Veterans Day. So this year, we would like to host a Memorial Day celebration, a small ceremony at the memorial on the Friday before Memorial Day. So we thought we would ask permission, make sure that that's okay, invite all of you. Second, we've noticed that the foot traffic during Veterans Day, throughout the displays in the park, has been lacking. The parade doesn't bring people down to the park. We thought that we would really like to bring it more central. If possible, we would like to put the displays up on the courthouse lawn around the memorial. I've included a map and a description of what they are. The field of crosses, a field of poppies, and then we've got some mannequin ghost soldiers and an ambulance and a jeep.
So most of them are accessible by sidewalks or they aren't actually walking on the lawn?
Yes, the plan is for them to not walk through the grass. They'd all be accessible along the sidewalk. But we thought it would bring more foot traffic to the displays and potentially to downtown Ottawa rather than in a park that, you know, they drive by quickly and they don't necessarily see it. But as people are stopping to get their lunch or come in for county business, take a little while, walk through it.
Thoughts or feedback?
What do you think about starting? There's a lot of stuff for the lawn, starting with a portion of that or keep it between the two parks.
I would be fine with that, yeah.
You guys have quite a display, but that would...
We do have quite a display.
That'd be a lot for fitting on the courthouse lawn.
Okay. I can certainly bring it back to the organization as a proposal.
Yeah. Just my thought. I don't speak for everybody, but I like the idea of getting traffic down there and interest to the memorial and tying it all together.
How long were you thinking about keeping the display up? How many days?
We generally keep them up for two weeks. So it would be the week before Veterans Day and then the week after.
I probably personally wouldn't have a problem moving it. It's November, so growing season's over. We're not gonna... And I think it'd be nice to have it all in one place instead of spread out. So I wouldn't probably have a problem with it, moving it all over there, but it's really up to the whole commission. That's my take on it. And as far as the Memorial Day, I think in the years past, that may have a little bit of something on Memorial Day at the...
Yeah, some service organizations do it on Memorial Day itself on Monday. And then I guess you guys want to do it on a Friday?
Yeah, we thought that the Friday before, most people would... Well, not necessarily most, but several people would be getting off around lunchtime. You know, have a higher attendance before people leave for the long weekend.
That makes sense.
Any issue, let's start there. Any issue with using the courthouse lawn the Friday before Memorial Day? So you're good to go on that. And then in terms of moving the display, I've got Commissioner Weymeyer, who is proposing a split approach. Commissioner Dickinson is fine moving the whole display. Any other thoughts?
I'm confused. What's in that three and four? Because you don't have as good a sidewalk access to that.
So...
It says something about Flanders Field.
The number three is Flanders Field. It is just a field of between 2,000 and 4,000 poppies that are just placed. The ghost soldiers currently is a set of six mannequins escorting a jeep. We have the area roped off around it so they can't get up to it.
I mean, I think I'm good with working toward the whole thing if that's... If it works out with part of it.
Yeah.
Okay. Roy, do you have any thoughts?
Oh, I don't mind having them down there. Originally, we had everything down at Forest Park, but that's seemed to change over time, so this is alternate plans.
I believe I've got three of you nodding your head that let's start transitioning to the historic courthouse lawn. Use this year as a segue, see how that goes. And then perhaps, based on feedback, we could continue to move more of the display down there in subsequent years.
Sounds wonderful. I'll take it back to the organization. We'll come back with a plan that has just part of the displays or...
Yeah, all right.
Sounds good.
Cool.
Thank you. Okay, and we have... Kirkerson is here for CASA in Kansas Children's League. Is that right? Okay, all right. So Chrissy and Jamie, come on down. I guess we have a proclamation to read. And is there anything you want to say first about the month here?
I was going to give you a couple statistics.
Okay.
So...
This would be proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month.
Yes. So national statistics show that one in at least every seven children are abused before the age of 18. I looked at the numbers for Franklin County. Franklin County currently has roughly 60... I'm sorry, 26,000 citizens with 22.7% of those being children under the age of 18, which translates to 5,900 children in Franklin County. So based on the one in seven, that means that at least 840 children in Franklin County will likely experience child abuse before their 18th birthday. Child Protective Services in Kansas in 2023 did receive 72,385 incident calls statewide, with 749 of those coming from Franklin County. So it's very close to the 840 number. 389 turned into investigative assignments, with 35 resulting in situations bad enough to remove children from their homes. So CASA, as an organization, is working with the children who are removed from their homes. Unfortunately, we don't have enough volunteers right now to serve all 35, something that we're working towards. So we believe that designating April as National or as Child Abuse Prevention Month would be a great way to help us get information out to people and help us to help these kids.
Bring awareness. All right. Would you like to say?
Yeah, come on up. I'll just introduce ourselves. My name's Chrissy Stombo. We are with Healthy Families Kansas. We're under Kansas Children's Service League. We are a new organization to the area. We are working with pregnant parents and moms and dads with kids all the way up to age five. We are a free service. Here, we cover six counties, the Fourth Judicial District plus Miami and Lynn County. So we work with DCF. We also work with hospitals, doctors. People can self-refer. Individuals can work with any community partner and refer to our program if they're needing assistance. Our goal is to prevent child abuse. So we work with families to prevent them ever having the kids removed from the home. So all of our goals, all of our plans are to build that bond with families, to build those parenting skills, to build as much of a positive relationship as we can. So we have staff that go into the homes once a week and work with these families, the parents on if they have crisis, kiddos, all of that. So we're really excited to be here in Ottawa. We're excited to be able to serve this area. We were a brand-new office that was able to expand to this area. So we are here and we're excited you guys are supporting April as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll read the proclamation. It reads where it says, "Franklin County, Kansas prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life among our citizens. CASA of the Fourth Judicial District and its volunteers represent the best interests of abused and neglected children who are involved in the juvenile courts. There are many children in Franklin County who suffer from some form of abuse or neglect each year. Through a national effort, members of the Franklin County community are encouraged to join together in the month of April to raise awareness for these children, for our victims of abuse and neglect. Kansas Children's Service League works to create healthy parent-child relationships. This effort of promoting awareness to the neglect and abuse will give abused and neglected children in our community and around the country a chance for a safe and positive future. Therefore, be it said, that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners formally designates April 2024 as Franklin County Abuse and Awareness Month, Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Sign this third day, April 24." All right, so thank you. And we have copies for each of your organizations. And we didn't even vote, so is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Okay.
Do you want to call it or you want to do it all... Let's do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, one for each of you to take back? Thanks very much. Thanks for coming. No public comment today. Consent agenda is minutes from the meeting on March 27, minutes from the study session, April 1, minutes from our canvas of the election, tax change orders in the amount of negative $12,764.20, claim vouchers in the amount of $317,371.40, and an emergency vehicle permit. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
To approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer?
Yes, staying on April 1.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. And our first item of business is to discuss the community partners' funding for the 2025 budget.
So I emailed it to you last night, but I also printed you a copy this morning of where each of you turned in your recommendations, your individual recommendations to me. So you guys have those before you. You also, as normal, have the average of all five of your recommendations, and you have the most common answer in the last column. So those are meant to be some starting points for talking about each of these things. And I'll take any direction from you guys on how you want to proceed.
Start at the top, work through them. Do you want to call it or you want to...
So the first one is CASA. The average recommendation was 18,800. The most common answer was 18,000. We're as low as 16,000, but as high as 24,000.
I was at the 24. You know, thought... Laid out a good vision for how we want to move forward, what they want to use the money for, that it's kind of a transitional period. They've struggled with funding administration, somebody to lead the organization. I think they have a good person now. The person has a vision. They need some resources to try and execute that vision. And I think that's a good time to support. I was at the 24.
I would be fine with that if anybody else, if everybody wants to go along with that.
Good.
Definitely don't... We don't generally give that big of a percentage or bumps to organizations, but I think when there's an opportunity, we try to jump on it. So it sounds like everybody's... Anybody against that? Or... No? All right.
I'd go either way.
Dawn?
No. No, I guess.
All right, so we're... What I'm hearing is 24,000.
I'm hearing 24,000. Okay. COF Training Services, their request was 102,000. That was a level request, and all of you said 102,000 is what you wanted to do. So that seems like a consensus. Okay. The next one is Elizabeth Layton Center. They requested 194, 250. That's up from 185. That's a 5% increase. The average came in at 189,850. The most common answer was 190,000. So three of you said 190,000. One person said stay flat, and one said go up to the... To what was requested.
I'm the highest one, and I don't think you can ever throw too much money at mental health, but I will be glad to support whatever the commission...
I'm on that board. I chair that board. And I said 190. Kind of a little bit of a bump, trying to keep it up with inflation. But of course, you did have the designation as a sole community... Or the enhanced pay rate from Medicaid, which has helped their finances a lot. Obviously, you didn't want to gain ground just to give it right back, but given all of our other needs, I backed that one down a little bit.
So 190?
That's what I said, but I...
Well, but that's the medium also, so it sounds like a good idea.
Three of us at 190.
Yeah.
Roy, what are your...
That's fine. 190 is fine.
You were a little under that, so... Okay. Anybody opposed?
No.
So I have 190. Okay. Franklin County Agricultural Society, they did not submit a form, but I have... One of you has had communication with them, and they said they didn't know that they needed to resubmit. They thought they would just get the same amount if they didn't resubmit. So we're communicating with them that they need to get their application in. But you guys said last meeting that you wanted to put a placeholder there for them, and you all came back at 12,100, which is what they had been allocated last year. So is that okay moving forward?
Yeah, they don't have a full-time staff relying entirely on volunteers to get their info in. I'm sure it was just an oversight.
Okay. The next one is the Conservation District. Their request was 56,000. That's up from 49,820. The average recommendation was 50,528. The most common answer was 50,000. So it looks like...
Be curious...
No, you guys were kind of all over, so...
First, I'd be curious to see what the state does on their big funding bump before we do a little more of a plan, if we are going to put more money towards there. I was at...
So we had two of you, two of you that stayed flat. So... And each of the other three of you gave a little bit of a bump.
I'd be all right with a 50.
50?
Yep, I'd be fine with 50.
Yeah.
I have three of you at 50?
Yeah.
Okay, or at four? Okay.
It's not too much of a bump. I'd like to see a little bit more of it. But it is true there. What they're going to come out of state will be a big jump, so...
It's a work...
450.
Okay. All right, so the FCDC brought a level request this year, 67,593, and you all recommended that. Okay, the Historical Society, their request was for $74,550. That was up from $71,000 last year. The average of your recommendations was $72,820, with the most common at 72,000.
Yep.
So...
72 is all right with me.
Roy's at 72?
I'd give us three at 72. I could do 72. I'd be the fourth.
Okay, all right. 72,000 for the Historical Society. Services for the Elderly, their request this year was 125,000. That's up from 120,000 last year. It looks like your average was 122.4. The most common answer was 122.5, with two of you saying that. One level and then two a little bit above.
142.5.
Yeah.
122.5? Is that okay with everyone?
So, are you?
Yeah, I was giving them the whole amount. But if we just, I guess, split the difference, then...
Okay.
Kind of put this right there.
122.5. The next one is East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging. Their request was a level request at 109,700, and that's what you all agreed on, was 109,700. So we'll put that one down. The next request was from Hope House. Hope House came with a $7,000 request. That was up from $5,000 last year. The average recommendation was 3,200, with two of you saying 5,000 and two of you saying nothing.
So it didn't end up going to Hope House. It went to the...
Pretza, yeah.
Pretza.
So...
They kind of worked themselves into a community partner when they really aren't a community partner. So it wasn't what we... It wasn't really what we intended that money to go to Hope House to start with.
You guys did allocate the money last year for the program that they brought to you, which was the tents and sleeping bags and heaters.
Right.
And that was not addressed in their proposal this year.
Yeah, it's not in their budget as an expenditure either, which was... I mean, it went towards other services for homelessness, but not that.
And I just thought if Hope House is no longer needing our money, then I would pull that back.
Yeah, and I would need... I'm sure they could find good uses or would tell you, come and say, no, we do need it. We have good uses, but...
But they had an opportunity to do it, and they didn't.
Yeah, I think... I mean, my opinion, we've run our course on funding that. Obviously, the need still exists. And if we have a group come to us, lay out a plan, a vision, you know, and a budget for what that money's going to be used for. But it appears that this kind of got mixed in with some other stuff, and this may be... I put zero just to end this. Because like I said, the need didn't go away. And if we get somebody with a good plan and something... It's not a no in the future. This path kind of thinks at the end of it, end of its road.
Is it all right if we don't allocate anything?
That's fine. Dawn, your thoughts?
Leaving the door open.
Yeah. Yeah, of course, I wasn't here during that discussion, so I don't know what all was brought back and forth. I was just thinking off of what they did the year before. So I didn't know if they changed their plan. And it's a very valuable commodity to Franklin County. I mean, if they're using it for a good thing, and I think it's a good thing, then we should try to support it, you know? But do we... Were we decision we want them to bring back more with what they're actually wanting to use it for?
Well, originally, they came to us saying this money will be used for, what would you say, winter clothes?
They were going to be using it for, like, sleeping bags, a winter, cold weather tent, and a heater, was my understanding.
And this was for people who live outdoors in extreme weather. We didn't want anybody to pass from that. They're given to them, but they're one-time. They're responsible for them. If they sell them, lose them, destroy them, that's too bad. But it's really just to keep... I mean, it's crude to say people from...
Thing with them, they're so hard to... They do so many things. There are a lot of things we don't see and know. I kind of see it a little bit, because...
But the money ends up going to this...
Not going to Hope House.
It's not going to Hope House anymore. It ended up to...
Pretza.
Pretza, which their budget's entirely the rent, utilities, and maintenance of a couple houses.
Hope House is not really what it is.
No, not at all.
Okay. Yeah, the money ended up... I didn't know that. The money ended up supporting the maintenance, rent of a few, of a couple houses for transition housing, which in itself is not a bad, but it's not what we were...
It's only supporting maybe... I mean, the one was supporting one person, and the other one was supporting a mom and two kids. So supporting four homeless people when there's way more than that, so...
And there's a couple organizations in town that provide housing to... So we're getting into...
So I have three of you at zero. Were you at zero also?
I mean, of course, I wasn't there during the conversation. I mean, if they feel that way and they heard the conversation, I'll go along with what they're saying.
Roy, do you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I can go along with not funding it.
Okay, moving on to Lane Agricultural Fair Association. That's another one of those. I let you know on Monday that she had let me know that she had a family situation, hadn't got her application in. But all of you guys wanted to put a placeholder there of $1,600, which is what we had done in the past. Prairie Paw's Animal Shelter, their request was for 60,800, and she said in her request that that was for the additional services of a person to pick up animals in the county, up from 44,000 last year. Your average was 44,400, but it looked like most of you wanted to stay at 44,000. What, four of you wanted to stay at 44,000?
She did say that her budget was level if we don't want to pursue that additional service.
Yeah.
So...
If I knew for sure it was going to work, I'd be there. Yeah.
So are we at 44,000 with four of you saying that?
I don't think our budget is going to allow us to help with... I mean, it sounds like a great idea to have another person that is solely for being able to... that is solely for being able to address picking up animals, but I don't think we want to stretch our budget that way.
And I agree, and I think if we're gonna pick up another line of service that we provide, I think we need to look at what else is on the menu right now as far as potential service lines we might have support for picking up.
Okay, 44,000 for that. And last one was Richmond Fair, and they brought a level request of 1,400. So. Want me to read through all these again, or do you want?
I think we made them clear when we went through, so.
And to be clear, Janet, these aren't finalized until we finalize the 25 budget.
Absolutely. We will be putting these into our budget as we work through that, and then we will finalize that when you guys, it comes back before you in the August, September timeframe.
So we really don't need to vote on stakes, we'll be voting on the budget.
Right, right.
Alright. Down to our second item of business, which is to consider chemical bids. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing today?
Good.
Good, good. Well, it's that time of year, we got our chemi, pardon me, got our chemical bids in. Had three respondents this year, which I was very happy about out of the, I sent five out and I delivered one in person at our annual weed conference, and they were one of them that actually came in as a low bid. Overall, chemicals this year are down, believe that or not. There's one or two that went up just a tick, but most everything's down on the chemicals that we, that we supply here. Nothing new, there's one chemical I can get back now, it's that 240 Lowall. It wasn't even available on the weed side last year, it was available on the row crop side. Last we bought a 250 gallon tote, well, that doesn't work for us, so. So that's one, one chemical that we have back again this year for, for the county residents. Like I said, everything's pretty well about the same as, as it has been years past. Like I say, if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to, to answer them.
Does Iowa Co-op historically not give a bid?
No, this is the first year that, since I've taken over, that they have not. So I, it shocked me, they, they've not received the bids in years past, but this is the first year they've never, that they've not submitted one. Yeah. Yeah, like I say, when we opened them, I was really surprised not to see them.
Good product on the shelf now that's just replacing it, or are you pretty well sold out?
I'm pretty well sold out. We've got, I think right now we've got about $20,000 worth of inventory, and one of that is one, one specific chemical, a higher-end chemical. It's called Paschagard, since I brought Remedy in last year, we're selling a lot more Remedy, because it's, last year it was 60 bucks a gallon, where that Paschagard was 102 or 4 a gallon. They don't exactly do the same thing, because Paschagard's two chemicals together, but half of it is Remedy. So like I say, so I think that's why, so, you know, at 100, 100 bucks a gallon, the inventory adds up pretty quick when you have 188 or 100, I think we have about 180 gallons of it sitting in the, in the warehouse right now. But everything else, we're pretty low on, we've been, we've had several sales already this year and could have made some more sales, but, you know, just because of, the spring set in earlier on, but we're getting these cool spells and stuff.
I was asking if you're sold out or?
Yeah, no, and I got to looking, people, you know, I've had a couple people a little upset, because I don't have a certain chemical, and I look back like last year, I'm four days behind last year of when I got my bids approved. So, you know, but people don't see it that way, so.
Just got green early this year. Is there a motion to approve the chemical bids?
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
They're not in business to discuss our boom truck.
Commissioners, earlier this year, you all approved a repair request of just over $12,000 for this boom truck. That, that repair estimate was based on a visual inspection by Altec. Once they got the, the truck up there and tore it apart, tore the boom apart, they found that all of the hoses, all of the hydraulic hoses throughout the boom need to be replaced. That repair jumped from 12,000 to 35,000 to make that, make that repair, which caused us, Kirk and Jeff and I, to take a step back and try to evaluate whether or not that truck was worth spending 35,000 on. We had multiple phone calls with Altec. We did research on what similar, similarly outfitted bucket trucks would cost, used models and new models. We spent a lot of time discussing it, pros and cons of moving forward with this. Jeff and Kirk went to the Altec site in St. Joe, is that where it's at? They spent several hours with the repair technician and other folks at Altec, looking at the boom truck and discussing alternatives. At the end of the day, we feel like moving forward with, with this repair is the right thing to do. The cab and chassis of this truck, it's a 2011 model. When we purchased it back in 2017, it had 131,000 miles on it. It's got almost 140,000 now, so we've, in the six, six and a half years that we've had it, we've put right at 8,500 miles on it. The only mechanical work that we've done to it has really just been routine maintenance. So it's been a, a good piece of equipment. The, the bucket and the malfunction with that, we're told, the, the explanation that we're getting from Altec is that in this particular boom, there is a, a couple of, oh, what are they called?
Quick connects.
Quick connects for tools that, that people can use inside the bucket and then on the ground. We have never utilized that truck in that manner. We don't have any of those tools and, and have never in our time used that, but there are levers. And we, what occurred is we think that the lever got bumped and opened up. The problem is in that the way that it was configured, the, those quick connects don't tie, there's just a direct tie to it, and they don't, there's not a way for it to recirculate in the entire hydraulic system. So if that lever is engaged, it causes all that hydraulic fluid to heat up, which caused the, the problems with the hoses. These guys were there, and they can talk about that a little bit more in depth, about what they saw and what we can do to mitigate that. But the recommendation is, is that we move forward with the repair. And then we, we have, in addition to the repair, that they add another section of hose so that that will recirculate if it were ever to be bumped again, so that we wouldn't have this particular problem. They did tell us that if, if we replace this, replace the hoses and add that, that other section of hose, that we shouldn't have any more problems like this for maybe up to 10 years. There's no guarantees of any of that, but that's their best guess. So we think that it's a good use of money, especially whenever you look at the prices for similar trucks. We think that adding this, making this repair, the value of the truck would be greater than that, so.
So the hose is basically crispy, because they got hot?
That's what happened. I'm not sure. Yeah, Dave kind of hit it on the head. Something occurred that caused that valve to either open or partially open.
Yeah.
And they wanted to keep the pressure high, whoever built that previous. That was actually built in the plant that we went up and looked at it in, at St. Joe, but.
As before, Altec switched to the lower system.
It was, and this one may have been set up that way, so they could run high pressure on both sides. So if they had more than one tool, they wanted the pressure, that's why they didn't run a bypass. I'm.
So on the ground, the hydraulics would be for a tamper, which we don't set.
Correct, or if they're the air, they could use it for.
Chainsaw, which we use gas saws.
Any type of a hydraulic hookup.
Would it save money just to kill off the hydro, the auxiliary system?
That's basically what they're gonna do, and it'd probably take more to remove it than it would if they, if they just plumb it to where it recirculates and can't get hot again. Typically, when you would turn that valve on, you would hear the whining of the.
Yeah.
And in this case, we never really heard it enough that.
It doesn't strain or anything.
And again, I think a lot of the folks that were using that were, you know, being trained. We've got a lot of new folks that probably, it very possibly could have been a branch that did it, I mean.
What's the reach on the boom? That dictates a lot of the value of those machines.
Yeah, I think it's 40, I think it's 42 feet.
Well, five years ago, it'd never be worth putting that kind of money in, you'd go to the market, but now a good truck's about this much.
I, we, we, several years ago, we did not have a boom truck. We tried to do this with rope and with throwing bean bags, and man, I don't want to go back to that.
Yeah.
I really don't, and it's, it's not an item that we used every single, every day, but it is something that in a storm event or special needs, we can really get out there, and it makes it a lot safer for us and the people that are.
We keep it in the shed when it's not.
We do.
So those lights don't get ate up.
It is, and it's really the platform of the truck and everything that you would want. It's, it's a good truck. I don't think we've done anything, Kirk, except for service it at.
Motor and PTO seem to be in good shape. Yeah, those are your other big items.
Yeah, we, we met with two, we met with their shop foreman, I think his name was Aaron, and one of the guys that had been working on it, and we got to see all the blisters. And there is no metal, of course, holding those hoses, because you're in the air, and it has to pass a dielectric test, but there was blisters on every fitting on that.
That's done, then.
So it, it had to be, and I, I think the labor cost is what really gets us. I don't remember the total hours, but it's not so much the materials, it's the, it's the ability to have it. They've got the boom apart, it's laying there, and it's just waiting for us to make a decision on what we want to do.
We've had a couple boom trucks, and it's either the pump, the motor, or the hoses on them, so.
If you do anything new, we would definitely be spending that, or much more, much more.
You would.
And you could just be buying somebody else's problem, so this way we, we feel like we're gonna get our specs to good condition.
It, it has everything on it that we need or that we would hope. If you, if you tried to go a different way, you'd probably get a cheaper truck with less ability and to, to get in the game. But it is, I know it's a lot of money.
Cool. So that's, a motion would be to approve the repairs from Altec in the amount of 35,131.41.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes, you wanna stay up here and talk about a skid steer? Our next item is the purchase of a 2024 John Deere.
We'll stay right here.
6110M tractor, oh, sorry, I went down the tractor, boy, you're gonna be up here a minute.
Yeah.
2024 John Deere 324G skid steer.
So we, we have been looking at, we've got a 2004 Bobcat Tool Cat that we've had for a number of years. It's been on the equipment replacement list for a couple of years now. We weren't really sure which direction we wanted to go and, and still had a little bit of life. The conclusion that we've come to, and, and this was Pat's idea, is to replace that Bobcat with a skid steer. Feel like the skid steer would be a little more versatile in application out there. We would get one with a broom on it to continue to take care of the transfer station floor, but having a, a third skid steer in our fleet would be really beneficial. This one would come with solid core tires, so we don't have issues on the pavement and the transfer station. But it can also be used by Rodent Bridge, borrowed by Rodent Bridge on occasion when we're doing blade patching and those sorts of things that we use skid steers for on pavement, but it, all of our skid steers are tracks. Pavement tends to tear up the tracks, so having something with tires would be a benefit, something that would be used on a, on a regular basis, and it would be a good addition to our overall.
The Pat's up here, this is the one that sits out at the tipping.
Yeah, exactly, it's gonna be frowned for landfill, is where it's gonna live most of its life. Like I said, that Tool Cat that was out there is a very unique item, very specific. It worked good for out there for what it was doing, but we can get so much more use out of that skid steer. Like I said, because that Bobcat, you know, it had different tools on it too. Well, you know, obviously, they used to mow the whole place with that. Obviously, you know, with the big zero-turn mowers now, it's much quicker, much more efficient with one of those instead of that Tool Cat. So we, you know, we don't have a need for that for any reason. And then the broom that's on it, it's shot, I mean, it's wore out, it's the same age as what the Bobcat was, so.
Is this a high-flow machine?
It is, it's a high-flow machine, I was gonna address that here in a second. The, but yes, the, so like I say, so we'll get more versatility out of that, and yes, it is a high-flow machine. And with, once, one thing I did check on, to make sure that that machine has a high-flow or a low-flow switch. So it'll run anything we have currently or purchase in the future. But yes, it is set up as a high-flow.
Especially if we borrow it, broom off the roads and run it, and it will burn it up if it's not a high-flow.
Right, well, see, that's the thing, the, in that bid, that bid includes, you know, I think a 72 or 78 inch bucket, a set of forks, and the broom. And so, I mean, because like I said, the broom's shot that's on, that's on the current Bobcat now.
Get in the bucket?
Yes, there'll be a bucket, forks, and a broom, yeah. And the Bobcat, they, they gave us a nice trade-in bid on it, and so it's, it'll go away, so there's no headaches there to worry about later. Like I said, I just, like I said, it'll be primarily for the landfill, but like, like David said, it'll be the solid tires, but it'll be, like all the, they look like Swiss cheese. It's the solid tires with holes in them, so there's, there's a give to them, because, you know, a solid foam-filled tire, it's like a buckin' bronc, it just, it'd be rough.
It'll be extremely beneficial for us when we do blade patching. Great, yeah.
The tracks won't tear their asphalt and stuff up, and, or the tracks doing these, the tires won't, so.
It's also important to note that this, this quote includes source well discounting, so we're, we're reaping the benefits of that.
That is a good price, we're a new high-flow machine.
Yeah, like I said, it's a machine plus three attachments, and, you know, and then they're taking that old Bobcat away, so. And I thought they were more than fair on that trade-in value.
Yeah, that thing's wore out.
Is the 324 about the same size as what we're using on the roads now?
A little bit smaller.
Yeah.
I think it's the same footprint, it's just a little bit smaller.
It should be, I believe, a 60 or 62 horse?
It, it'll fit on all the trailers that we have.
Nice.
And also, it's coming from the Solidways Special Caps Fund, which is.
Correct.
Great.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the 2024 John Deere 324G in the amount of 64,998.53?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Roy.
Second.
Thank you, Don.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, fifth item is to consider purchasing a 6110M tractor and rotary broom mower.
So these, yeah, I'm gonna let these guys speak to this, but the next, this item and the three after it are all kind of related. I felt like it'd be easier for you all to take action on those items individually, but it is all part of the, the big picture there.
Wanna talk about the, or do you want me to, about the?
Go ahead.
Okay, Dave and I and Kirk have been in contact with John Deere. The state of Missouri has had a program for several years that the state uses, where they can actually purchase a brand-new tractor, pay so much per hour to utilize that tractor, and then it is taken back after so many hours. I don't remember what the word was, the one on this was how many hours?
So, so the first item that we're gonna talk about is the, is the purchase of a, of a boom, boom mower, tractor and boom mower, but the rental program that Jeff is, is referencing is part and parcel to this. And that program is a one-year rental for 350 hours at $20.72 an hour. The only time that we are billed for the hours is only when it's in use. So if it's, when it's parked in our shop overnight, we're not being billed for that. We estimate that we will utilize that tractor through the rental program about 700 hours. And so the plan would be that they would bring us two tractors. One would sit in the lot until the first one hit the 350, and then we would pick up and utilize the other one. We think that that cost. It's about $14,000 a year on the, on the rental program for the two tractors. They would pick up all the maintenance and, and those sorts of things during that 350 hours. The, the. The, um, the sixty-one M tractor that we would like to buy to, to be our primary boom mower, uh, that tractor and boom mower, um, will replace a, a, um, oh, it's a twenty-fourteen New Holland that is currently, uh, broken down and, and we made the decision, uh, late last year not to repair that. The cost just didn't seem, uh, warranted for that. And so what Heritage Tractor has done has kind of made us an overall offer for all of this, for all these various pieces. Um, so we're proposing to trade in the twenty-sixteen, uh, sixty-one thirty M. They're gonna give us fifty-five thousand dollars for that tractor, uh, to help offset the cost of the new sixty-one ten M and boom mower. So that, um, our all-in cost for that is a hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. That gets us a, uh, a brand-new tractor and a fifty-inch diamond, uh, boom mower.
The, uh, the rental of the machines, that's just for mowing ditches, right? That's not a boom?
Well, the, what we're talking about, I've, in my mind, I've rolled all three up together and Dave has them broke down individually. But one would be for the, for the blacktop mowers, which we pull a bat wing behind it. And then we would have the, also the, a boom mower and, uh, mower to re, to replace the New Holland that we have. But at twenty dollars an hour for use of a tractor that can go back, we don't have to put hands on, we have to replace tires when it's done. Uh, we just send it back to them at twenty dollars an hour. That's, that is basically exceeding the depreciation cost. You couldn't do it any cheaper than that. The other thing that's good about the program we've talked is it doesn't really matter what, what model of tractor that you take. If it's the cheaper versus the luxury, the, the ca, the case is still twenty dollars an hour. I think the reason that they're doing this is John Deere is just trying to flood the market with used tractors that have been on government contract. So we have the option to purchase it at the end if we, if so desired, but I, I really think we, we, the best way to do this would just be continue as the program goes every year.
But the ones we're renting, they don't have a boom on them. They can't do that task. They're just for mowing ditch.
Just a power unit.
What do those cost to purchase if we were to?
About the last sixty-one thirty M, it was ninety-five thousand back then.
How long did it last?
That's the one we're talking about trading in. It's eight years old now.
So it's more than that now, but your cost per year is close to the fourteen thousand that we're looking just to rent, plus oil changes, services, whatever we did to repair it, tires, which are.
Who'd run a set of tires off the blacktop mower?
We, we replace the left side at least once a year.
Yeah. I mean, it, it hurts a little to write a check for fourteen thousand and not have anything at the end of the year, but it's a better value for the taxpayer.
I think so. I think it's really a no-brainer when you really look at what the value you're gonna get out of it per, or what you're paying cost per mile.
Yeah.
I don't know how you.
How much is it an hour after the three hundred and fifty hours?
It's like time and a half, so it'd jump up.
Thirty bucks.
But, but again, I think they, once you exceeded, exceeded that hours, you could
You'll have another one sitting right there.
That you could come back and just run to get the hours on it. They're interested in hours primarily.
Yeah.
And not to exceed, exceed that.
The, the, the other part of this is, um, so we're, we're, the rental tractors we're proposing to use on our blacktop. That, they, that would be our primary blacktop mower, our tractor. Uh, the mower that we have currently that we use, we're proposing to, uh, move that to the landfill so that the landfill staff can have a, they've already got a tractor out there, uh, but having a better, uh, mowing setup so that they can mow the, the cap out there without, uh, invol, having to involve Roden Bridge staff. Uh, so we would have to, uh, we are proposing to buy a, uh, another, uh, uh, side-mount mower, uh, batwing mower, uh, for just under twenty-four thousand dollars, which is included in.
It's a ten-foot pull behind with the wing, had one hydraulic wing. It's same.
And that would be ours, uh, and we just put it on the next tractor.
Will you transfer the old landfill mower, tractor combo to the public works side and trade it? So we can get that asset under the tax, taxing side?
Yeah, we would, we would do something with that and, and, and probably what's out there, we would eventually auction.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying we get that over to the public side.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we've, the, the mower that we have on that right now, it's not necessarily a bad one, but it, we, it has a tendency to burn clutches a little bit when we have, and I know Kirk's replaced clutches in that thing several times. So I, I think if we had something a little more newer that's, uh, it's just one of the, I don't wanna say a weak link in it, but that's, it would be a lot easier on the cap than what we do out in the roadways.
A lot less time fixing it. All right.
So this amount, one twenty-four thousand, three seventy-two, seventy-seven is after the trade-in. That would be our
Yes, ma'am.
Actual cost.
Everybody understand the plans? Have any, all right, questions about the plan? We'll go through the items one at a time and vote them, but. Okay. All right, well, we'll start down the list. Thank you. Uh, the first one is to purchase a twenty-twenty-four John, oop, uh, John Deere sixty-one ten M tractor with, uh, boom mower from Heritage Tractor. That amount is one twenty-four, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, seventy-seven cents. Is there a motion for that?
No, moved.
There a second?
Second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymer.
Yes.
Next item of business is to consider approving one-year rental of the new twenty-twenty-four. Singular, but really it's plural. There's two of these. Two new, uh, twenty-twenty-four John Deere sixty-one thirty R tractors from Heritage. Tractor in the amount of twenty dollars and seventy-two cents per hour, the use of up to three hundred and fifty apiece. Do we need to double that?
Sure.
So I mean, so we'd be purchasing up to seven hundred hours at that price. Or motion to approve?
Approve.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymer.
Yes. Seventh item of business is consider purchasing a twenty-twenty-four John Deere FC-ten R Flexwing Rotary Cutter. Uh, and that amount is twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymer.
Yes. And our eighth item of business is consider selling the twenty-twenty-four boom mower to Heritage Tractor in the amount of fourteen thousand. Basically, do you want to take the risk of sending it to the auction or?
Twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen, yep. Thank you. Ten years old. That amount would be fourteen thousand to sell.
How many hours that got on that? Approximately? That's it? What the horsepower is that? That, that's still like a hundred and ten horsepower?
What's, what's wrong with it? Why are we not fixing it? Yeah, okay.
This, this was actually, going to read back, this was actually a gift to us for a.
Yeah. That was ten years ago. I, I told you that was about three or four.
So person just take that, um, more off of there, be a regular tractor?
I think so. I think you probably would get a good.
This is valued in the tractor fourteen at auction?
Um, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, the big problem of getting a mower sold too. I, I think there's, well, being blue, I'm, I'm concerned. But probably a good deal.
What the, probably a good deal.
If it was green, I would say, uh.
Roll the dice on the auction, but. Does that emotion to go ahead and approve the sale?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymer.
Yes. Staff reports. Derek.
Yeah, um, have just started, uh, not just started, but starting to do a lot more work on the twenty-five budget. Um, been working a lot with Janet. Janet spent significant time, uh, in preparation of today and today's items. Just making sure, working with David, making sure that we've got a good handle on the public works budget with the transition coming up. Uh, my HR director, Amy Hodo, is doing a pay study organization-wide. She started doing that. Um, you know, we're still looking at it from thirty thousand feet, but from thirty thousand feet, it looks like we have fallen behind again. And so we, uh, will have to work, uh, her and I, as well as Janet, to figure out uh, how to responsibly proceed. I don't believe we are in position as an organization to do another organization-wide pay increase. We just did that. Um, but we understand that we have to have a plan and certain positions are gonna have to be addressed. And so that's a big chunk of my time will be spent trying to work through all of that and provide you with a, a recommendation that balances fiscal responsibility with making sure our folks are taken care of. We, you know, we have to have our folks, obviously. So, um, other than that, I, I don't believe I have anything. So thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Pat. Yeah, come on.
All right, just an update. You know, of course, April is our free dump month. Um, it starts this weekend with the City of Ottawa. They have a roll-off. Um, I know there'd be a, uh, some roll-offs in the recycling center parking lot like they have in years past. Um, then the next week after that, it'll be west of fifty-nine highway for, for those communities that are participating there. Then the week after will be the east of fifty-nine highway. And then the countywide will be the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, where county residents can come out and, uh, dispose their items out there at our transfer station at no cost. Um, but like I say, somebody will be there checking IDs and making sure they are Franklin County residents. Um, then the noxious weed world, we're starting to get ready, getting ready to ramp up and be busy. It's that time of year, so it's, it's gonna start being busy, really busy around our, around our facilities. So that's all I've got.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from CDC, Paul? Uh, Dustin? Ryland, I see you here. Okay. All right, Sheriff.
Good morning, we're up quick. Um, just wanted to update you guys and let you know that we did have the tax sale yesterday. Um, there ended up, some of those properties had been, uh, redeemed before, so we got it down to where we, uh, only sold fourteen properties, but we did get them all sold. Um, I anticipate, uh, getting the sheriff deeds probably, uh, some, probably taking care of sometime within the next week. We're waiting for the, the attorneys to get everything back to us with all the legal descriptions. Um, but that'll be fourteen more properties. They'll be actually actively back on the tax rolls. And so that, that's a good thing. And we'll see some cleanup and development on a few of those properties a- a- around the county, which are gonna be, that, that's gonna, that's gonna pay dividends. So that's gonna be very good for everybody in those neighborhoods as well. So, and that's really all I had for you guys this morning.
I'll, I'll send the five of you, uh, a breakdown of what the property sold for, but there were a couple of them that, a few of them that went high.
There were several vacant lots in Ottawa that we had, um, like, people who are actively building infill houses that were, they were really competing over. And we also had a couple in Richmond that, that sold really well. One of them was a recent, um, part of, um, your demolition program that David brought to you. Um, and so Deeley Sims, the clerk of Richmond, was there and she was very excited about, um, the person that bought that property and the prospect of getting a new house built there. So, um, she felt really good about those two. So hopefully those will pay the dividends that you guys thought that they would from enacting that program. So, but it was.
And similar with the, uh, uh, the big property over in, uh, Pomona as well, the old Wilmark.
Yes.
So, um, that, I, I think overall it was, there's gonna be positive things wi- with this, so, yeah.
Tax sales are complicated. Tax sales are expensive. Um, but gosh, they are worth it. Um, you clean up the tax rolls, the long-term dividends are, I mean, hard to quantify. I mean, it's such a good deal. Um, but really, since the pandemic and the housing market exploded, even in the short term, financially, it's a fantastic deal. But once I'm able to, to sit down and wrap my mind around all of that, I'll get you guys a report on what that looks like. But I, yeah, I think it was resoundingly successful.
And Janet can attest too, that it takes a long time to get to forty-seven thousand dollars when people are upping each other by fifty or a hundred dollars.
How what the highest one went for, was it forty-seven?
I think forty, I think forty-seven was the highest.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think it might have been just a hair over forty-seven, but yeah, it took them a long time to get there.
If a property sells for more than the taxes that are owed, does the a- a- additional go toward, to back to the original owner?
Yes, it's slightly more complicated than that, but yes, um, there is a mechanism by which our fees get paid.
Well, yeah, you have to, yeah.
Ultimately, yes, it will go back to.
We, ideally, we would cover the cost of the tax sale, so you have to figure that kind of per property and
Right, right.
figure out if there is any excess. I mean, it seems like that one, that maybe there was some, but you've gotta cover all the taxes. You gotta cover district court cost fees. You've gotta cover attorney fees. So
Publication.
As Derek said, this is a very expensive process, very time-consuming and, um, uh, this was fairly successful for a tax sale, but, uh, that doesn't mean that it wasn't without cost.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Anything else, Public Works?
Yes, sir.
We went through, all right. All right. Commissioner?
I did go to Rantville meeting tonight. Uh, uh, they did have their coast court. I didn't go to the coast court, but they kinda reviewed it. Uh, it sounds like it's going really well. They pared down two homes down there and, and the intent is, uh, one new home will go back in the one spot. And, uh, uh, they, they have a third well down there they hadn't used for a long time because of failure in the lines and stuff. Well, it's getting to where they're not getting water good from the other two wells. So they're gonna put forward, they got a bid of ten thousand dollars to reopen that well. And they've, they've been told it produced as much as the other two when it was open, so they're hoping that'll kinda, once you pay that, uh, they're hooked into six and they got the water, but it's a lot less expensive than what had their own, so. That's all I got.
I was fairly busy. I did go to, um, the, um, Chamber of Coffee on Friday was for CASA. So we've kind of seen them, uh, you know, it's really exciting where, where that program is and where it was a couple of years ago. That seemed like they really have a, a good director and really moving forward with that. I was in Topeka a couple of times last week. I was invited, um, to represent it, to help represent Kansas Association of Counties when the governor signed the proclamation, uh, declaring April as County Government Month. Um, you know, it's really basically, sometimes you forget that the county provides a lot of services besides the tax bill that you get in November. Um, you know, and so really, i- i- it's to give us an opportunity to maybe highlight, uh, all those services that we provide. Um, and then on Friday, they had a little ceremony at the, um, Capitol that commemorated the start of this national, or the County Government Month. And also, I don't know, ten years ago, each of the counties in the state of Kansas contributed, I think, a thousand dollars. And maybe you, you guys were all a part of that. Um, and then when you go in the visitor's center, on the floor of the visitor's center, there's a map of the state and each county is, is there. And it's been ten years. So it's, they commemorated the ten-year anniversary of when that was. Um, and when I went in the Capitol on Wednesday, I actually went up to the top of a, I've never done that, the dome. Um, so that was kind of fun. And then, um, Monday night, I went to the Princeton, uh, city meeting. Um, they are, they actually approved a twenty, up to a twenty-one um, home subdivision in the city of Princeton. And it's been kind of a long time getting to that point because one of the things they had to do is figure out, uh, how many, how, how many people they could add and still have their current, um, lagoon system. And this will put them over eighty. And this will put them over eighty percent. And so unless they do something more with their, whatever system they're gonna use, then they're gonna have to figure out how, you know. Because then right after that, they had somebody else that wanted to do some more building in the city of Princeton. And at this point, they're like, well, we need to figure out where we're gonna be because at this point, they don't know how they're gonna, um, increase that. You know, at the, with city funds, you know, how far that will stretch. So it's kind of exciting. People are building in Princeton, Kansas, so that was the major thing.
And, and not saying that because I'm, I'm from that area, but I admire the, the civic pride in Princeton. Um, they really care about their community, they take care of their community. Um, I don't know, I, I think Princeton sets a good example for a lot of smaller communities. Wishmore would follow them. They, they care, and that's awesome, so.
Yeah, they don't wanna let more people, well, anyway, so, yeah. They're, they're trying to, to balance between, yes, you know, let's do some building, but also we want to make sure that we aren't hurting the people that are already there, so. Um, it, part of the problem is they don't have a lot of regulations, because, you know, as far as subdivisions, and they're actually using the county subdivision regulations for the road, for the roads into this new, so, you know, you know, as far as the depth of the, the roadway and, and the width, um, they're using those, so that helped, helped them in that respect. So appreciated that. So anyway, that's, uh, I think all I have.
Motion to adjourn?
No, ma'am. Second. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.